Really quick, discussion. I guess it was aimed to be towards Asia Brown, but you ain't... Oh, can you hear me now, Ms. Ernst? Alright, cool. It was aimed for someone else that's not present. We just want, we're concerned. You said you passed Measure P to get the potholes fixed. Measure M, which inflated our water bills, was passed to fix our potholes, and nothing was done. You fired my family to fix the potholes, and the previous person went after my sister. So, it's personal.
Hi, my name is Marta Barajas, and I'm just here to demand our streets to be fixed. I know people blame the previous administrations, and it goes back and back, back to many years ago. So, Mr. Saunders is our city manager, I'm sorry, our city treasurer. We need answers, that's all we want. You all live in Compton, all of you guys. You guys have to drive through these potholes, just like we do. And it's, it's not getting any, any better. Do we have to have a Christmas parade every day to get our streets fixed? Because when Christmas came around, you guys fixed Compton. And I'm not saying you guys in particular, it's just a shame. Please fix our potholes, fix our streets, find money. Money's there, use it wisely. Ms. Asia Brown is not present, but she must not live in Compton. Because if she were to live in Compton, she would be standing right here with us. Ms. Janice Zerita is tired of telling the residents, you know, there's nothing she could do without Mayor Brown. It takes three votes. So, can somebody please address us and tell us what is the next step? What can we do? What can we do? Even when the kids cross the streets to go to school, they have to maneuver themselves, you know, not to hit, walk on those potholes. Do it for the kids, please, thank you.
Thank you. Rodney Andrews?
I'm not, I'm sorry, Doc. I'm not good, sorry, Doc. Dang, really quick, discussion. I guess it was aimed to be towards Asia Brown, but you ain't... Oh, can you hear me now, Ms. Ernst? Alright, cool. It was aimed for someone else that's not present. We just want, we're concerned. You said you passed Measure P to get the potholes fixed. Measure M, which inflated our water bills, was passed to fix our potholes, and nothing was done. You fired my family to fix the potholes, and the previous person went after my sister. So, it's personal. I'm done.
Hi, my name is Marta Barajas, and I'm just here to demand our streets to be fixed. I know people blame the previous administrations, and it goes back and back, back to many years ago. So, Mr. Saunders is our city manager, I'm sorry, our city treasurer. We need answers, that's all we want. You all live in Compton, all of you guys. You guys have to drive through these potholes, just like we do. And it's, it's not getting any, any better. Do we have to have a Christmas parade every day to get our streets fixed? Because when Christmas came around, you guys fixed Compton. And I'm not saying you guys in particular, it's just a shame. Please fix our potholes, fix our streets, find money. Money's there, use it wisely. Ms. Asia Brown is not present, but she must not live in Compton. Because if she were to live in Compton, she would be standing right here with us. Ms. Janice Zerita is tired of telling the residents, you know, there's nothing she could do without Mayor Brown. It takes three votes. So, can somebody please address us and tell us what is the next step? What can we do? What can we do? Even when the kids cross the streets to go to school, they have to maneuver themselves, you know, not to hit, walk on those potholes. Do it for the kids, please, thank you.
Adrienne Cleveland?
Good evening, my name is Adrienne Cleveland, and I'm also here to speak on behalf of the citizens of Compton. It's ridiculous that our streets look the way that they do. There are potholes everywhere. You have to play, dodge the pothole when driving down the street, it's so ridiculous. You're tearing up cars, you're getting whiplash driving through the streets of Compton. It makes no sense. Not to mention, we have our mayor who's talking about running for, to be a representative, really? We need representation in Compton. We need you to continue the work, finish the work. It doesn't make any sense. Fix our streets, fix these potholes, bring economic jobs back to Compton, bring the economy back to where it needs to be. It makes no sense that the majority of our seniors in Compton are losing their homes to reverse mortgages. They have to reverse mortgage in order just to live here in Compton. It doesn't make any sense. And then, because the, the cost is so high, we can't even afford to take over the mortgages once, once the reverse mortgage has been placed there. So many people are losing things. Again, I'm always coming here speaking about how vital Compton is. We have vital resources, our land is rich. We have some of the largest lots, our properties, you can, it's ridiculous. We don't live in areas where, it's like projects everywhere else. Houses are on top of each other. You can actually walk out, have a front yard, a backyard, enjoy your space. We have space in Compton, but we are losing it, giving it away, letting whatever elements come in here and take this. Before you go somewhere else and, and try to fix, fix what we have here now, thank you.
Mubarak? Mubarak, Mohammed Mubarak?
Good evening, Council, Mayor Pro Tem, and City Manager, City Clerk. I am standing here with a heavy heart right now because my sister Faith Quisenberry, she and I grew up here in Compton. When we moved here in 1959... When we moved here in 1959, went to George Washington Elementary, Rosecrans, Walton, Vanguard, and Centennial. I was very close to her. We got the same mother and father. And she died Sunday night. She lost her battle with throat cancer. And I'm here because I'm imploring the help of the council. I have no other way. We're having a challenge in bringing her body back from Atlanta, Georgia, where she died. And once she gets here, we have to put her in the ground. I know I talked with the city manager regarding one of my art pieces, of my recent piece of Martin Luther King, that I'm sure several of you have seen already. And I'm asking, and I was told that it had to be approved by the council. It's less than $5,000. I'm only asking $4,000 for it. It would very much help me bury my sister. And I'm not ashamed to stand here and talk to you in this manner, because I love my sister. And I'm just asking you all in the name of God to, if it's possible, allow this to happen. I just wanna thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. David Irons.
David Irons. I got to write stuff down these days. I'm an advocate for homeless people, because I might become homeless in a little while if I don't catch up with my mortgage. Somebody else was talking about that. But when people have a bundle of rights, a bundle of rights is a real estate term. You have a right to rent out your house, you have a right to lease your house, you have a right to give away your house, you have a right to all these things. And since I'm a homeless advocate, and Ms. Zarita know where I live, been like this, I'm trying to get some grant money so I can finish my house and rent it out to the homeless people, homeless women and children. I heard a lady say, they trying to break up the black family. Our family been broke up since 1492, when Columbus sold the blue. So we need to help each other. When my parents came from Mississippi, we used to let people stay at our house until they got theyself together. You uppity Negroes, I almost said like a name for a horse, but you uppity Negroes don't think people, homeless people, could live in your community. It is, they right. I know in my neighborhood, I used to live 635 West Palmer, near the Calis. I don't know if you know the Calis, but they had a mental kind of situation over there. And one of them got away and ran into my house, and we tried to get rid of it. They say people mentally, they have a right to live in a house. Animals, I killed three mice in my house, animals never seek shelter. But these uppity Negroes that live here, think they too good to see poor people. If you give a person a home, he's no longer homeless. We need to find out some kind of way to help these homeless people. I'm willing to, but I need a grant so I could finish my house. If y'all don't think I need a grant, fine. So I'm gonna be homeless with them, and I'm gonna be parking my motor home in everybody's neighborhood for 72 hours. And then I'm gonna bring these homeless people into council meetings, point each and every one of you that's against homeless people in Compton. And you don't think I will? Most of the time, I do what I say I'm gonna do. Talk to you later.
Thank you.
Go to a gated community.
Cindy Satoya.
Buenas tardes, voy a necesitar un translator. No, voy a pedir un translator. Le estoy pidiendo un translator que le pagan 500 dólares cada semana. Necesito que venga aquí abajo.
Do you want a translator, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay.
No, pues ustedes le pagan 500 dólares a la semana, debo de suponer que es por algo, ¿no? En el contrato que acaba de recibir no está mayor.
One second, one second, the translator is coming.
It's a game.
I just came to ask.
Bueno, tengo muchas cosas para preguntarle, pero una de las cosas, ¿cuántas horas usted trabaja como translator?
But one of the things that I wanted to ask is, how many hours do you work as a translator?
As a what?
As a translator.
You, te estoy preguntando a ti, ¿cuántas horas usted trabaja?
I'm asking you, how many hours do you work as a translator? I work full-time as a translator.
This is not, this is not, excuse me, Madam Mayor Protem, this is not a question and answer, so you don't have to answer.
Si, eso de bien, a lo que está pasando, que ustedes están gastando, malgastando muchísimo dinero, y os quería saber cuánto es. Una de las recomendaciones que pusieron en el expediente fue el contrato de translator.
One of the things that you added in the agenda was the contract for the translator.
Que eso fue una de las cosas que se están malgastando, por eso yo venía a preguntarle a usted, y si lo estamos pagando usted, pues aunque sea usarlo, ¿no?
Misused, and that's why I was asking, well, if they're paying you, well, at least let's use you, right?
Una de las cosas que me está pasando hoy en día es que nosotros, muchos de la comunidad, recibimos un encargo.
A lot of people in the community.
We need to speak one at a time, so we can understand what's being said.
Okay. Una de las cosas que está pasando en nuestra comunidad es que muchos de nosotros que tenemos casas estamos recibiendo notificaciones de fines, fines, que pasaron hace muchos años. Ahorita muchos de la comunidad acaban de saber que ellos también tienen liens en su propiedad.
One of the things that is happening in our communities is that the homeowners are receiving liens of stuff that happened many years ago, and this is happening throughout the entire community, that we're receiving these charges for liens.
Y lo digo porque ahorita yo sé que ellos mencionaron que nuestra ciudad está pasando 45 millones de déficit, y que ellos están tratando de buscar cómo es que pueden agarrar el dinero, así es como lo están agarrando a muchos de la comunidad.
And this is, this has been mentioned, because right now it was just said that our city is with a $45 million deficit, and we're trying to see what is it that is being done in order to get that money.
Otra cosa que está pasando, los acaban de subir el bilde agua, y acaba de ocurrir en donde que se hizo un trato con otra compañía. Necesitan, nosotros tenemos la responsabilidad porque estamos vendiendo nuestra agua.
The other thing that happened was that our water bill was increased, and this is one of the things that we would like to know, whether it is gonna be our responsibility because we're selling our water.
No fue lo que dije, pero como... Otra de las cosas que se están haciendo aquí es que están agarrando a muchas de la gente que son latinas, lo están mandando con la migra. Es una cosa del que dijo la mayor, que no se encuentra, tampoco está en otro aquí, nuestro representante supuestamente latino no está aquí para nunca representar lo que nosotros queremos.
The other thing that is happening is that our Latino people is being sent away with the immigration, and the main one is not here to hear what was being said, and she actually promised that that was not gonna happen.
Ellos dijeron que esta ciudad era una ciudad santuaria, y entonces es que no puede venir aquí. Hay otros mayadormos que sí le están pronunciando a su comunidad, y sí le están notificando para que ellos se protejan. La de nosotros es al contrario. Nosotros estamos viendo una crisisidad de crimen, y es porque todo lo que está pasando.
This is, this is something that she promised, that we were gonna have this sanctuary city, and she's not complying with that. We're being treated as if we were criminals, and this is something that is not only happening here, but it's happening in other places, and it shouldn't be happening.
Bueno, solo quería mencionarles eso porque pues como dije, no está nuestro representante aquí, y bueno, tampoco está la representante de la ciudad.
That's what I wanted to let you know, that our representative is not here, and the representative from the city is not even present.
Thank you, sir. Maria Villarreal.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Maria Villarreal. Good evening, my name is Maria Villarreal. Let's make Compton great again. Tonight, community of Compton, I'm here to bring a message to the community, to the Taca people. Just don't be a victim of immigration scam. There's a lot of people up there going through that, and, you know, getting some information and using nonprofit organizations to get some paperwork for Taca. Please, community, be aware that in Compton, unfortunately, it's a city where everybody thinks that they can come in and do whatever they want. Our immigrants, our people that falls on Taca, please be careful. Tengan cuidado, todos esos Taca. Buenas noches.
Thank you. Acton Klein.
I'm, one of our items is on the agenda tonight, I didn't see the place, if we needed to speak, so I don't have anything public.
When we open, is that the hearing? Is that the hearing? It will be opened, and you can speak at that time. Thank you. Pat Lawrence.
Okay, I don't know who to address this to, Rambo, or to the city attorney, but I would like to know who authorizes when somebody wanna move out. Like, the mayor has moved in another spot? She's moved, she took her Lizon and a family member. Do she have to get approval to do that? And then, who gave the approval? And then I would like to know who moved her stuff over there? Was it the workers here, the person from outside? And I'd like to know, do she have a bodyguard? Because we need to know what you guys are spending our money for, because we don't have that much left. And I can understand what they're saying about the cars, 'cause mine had a pothole that cost me $3,000. But your guys' car's messed up, and y'all use our money. Now, let me explain something, we don't have enough money for no streets. Let's get rid of personnel, you're not hiring nobody. If somebody wants somebody, you just bring that person in there, Rambo, and they sign a paper, and that's it. So that's money we could save. We got the Lizons. Now, I know they need a job, okay, everybody's job, but the people sitting up here is not doing anything, so what do they need that for? That's money they can save. Mr. Rambo, I know there's a lot of people here today, so I'm expecting a letter or something, in writing from you, about the questions I asked. How do they get to move out? How much we had to pay? And I'm gonna say something, it might not come out right. Don't lie to us no more, 'cause you lie too much. This is wrong. You just sit down there, and you, I'm not gonna bring it out what it is, but you know what I'm talking about. Why, we don't have no people here, no people in parking, but then you let one go, and that's a good one, that you let her go. This city is dirty. You guys make us look bad. We're tired. I think right now, if you guys don't get it together, let's get us a lawyer, we could sue you now. We got a city attorney here, don't call him, 'cause you'll never get him. It's not right that we call these different offices and we don't get nobody. We pay you. Our water bill and everything is high, this is wrong. I can only count, well, Ms. Garwin do her job, at least she got somebody to answer. But the rest of you guys, this is a disgrace. Oh, and we can go to the FBI, you guys. Get him a letter.
Thank you. Mr. Holyfield.
To the mayor, city council staff, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Benjamin Holyfield, and I'm the founder and the president of the Compton Business Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to send this up to you. It's concerning business. We had about a week ago a tree to fall on Compton Boulevard, we're doing a beautification program on Compton Boulevard. And Compton Boulevard covers two different districts, one and three. And just come on down here farther, four and two. And this gentleman, gentlemen, missed it. He's in two. My point to that is, because you have to work as a team. The teamwork makes the dream work. Now, pass it to each one of you, 'cause normally you miss each other, you may miss something. A tree fell. We called you up, you didn't come out. We called the Sheriff's Department, the whole record is there, the tree's there, and so forth. And it's the first district, and someone in the first district mentioned that tree. Now, my point is, half of it fell over and broke into the garage fence, damaged fence. The other half, if the wind blows, will fall in the street, and someone will be hurt or worse. And you still have not come out. Yet, there's a work order for the tree situation. My thing is, we do too much talking. Sometime I sit in the first row, the first seat, and actually go to sleep. I'm only 38, you see? Go to sleep. When I wake up, the game's insane. They don't do nothing. And that's why the people, you see what I mean? And if you wanna see the truth of it, look on a person's face. Look at Walmart. Walmart greet you friendly, and they're the biggest store in the world. We come here, these people, look. Look how happy they are to see us come up here, and we're the bosses. Call we the people. Look at her, look at the city manager. He very seldom looks up, and I like him, I misunderstand him. Then we have a boss, when the boss is not here. These are the things that I'm talking about. And then we want, we have some council people wanna be a chamber. And too much boogaloo, and too much partying at the Dollar Height Center, too much of this stuff. That's the problem. We have too many problems, I mean, too many dances, too many giveaways, too much of all that. How you gonna fix a pothole and you boogalooing all the time? Or giving away some clothes, or whatever. Don't misunderstand, I'm not against the needy. My wife and I had a homeless program for a number of years, so I understand it. But the thing is, I'm, for a number, a number of years, for those who, you'll be okay. Yeah, you'll be fine. Yeah, these are the things that I'm saying, and thank you so much for your time. It's called attitude determines your latitude. They need to change their attitudes up here. I've been here over 55 years. It's simple, just change your attitude.
Thank you, Mr. Holyfield. Floyd Smith.
Good evening, mayor, city council, commission... Good evening, Mayor, I mean, City Council, Commission, the community and everybody on staff. My first concern is, I, I have a three. On the homeless dumping with these baskets, I know a lot, we can't do about, a lot of laws is in place for the homeless, but however, they do take those baskets off of those, off of those grocery store property, that's theft to me. I mean, that's just theft. And that's something the sheriff can do about that, you know, because they picking up trash in those baskets and then they dumping them out on, on, on the, on the parkways and, you know, in front of people's homes and stuff like that. And I'm not taking anything from the homeless, but the point is those baskets do belong to those grocery stores and we gotta go and shop here and, you know, we get the baskets back, they all, you know, they all really messed up and stuff like that. And I don't think that's fair to the community and our, our money that we have to pay at these stores. However, I wanna say something about the water bill and, and the trash. I noticed that if you pay the water bill and don't pay the trash, they'll cut your water off. And I wonder why the trash bill is tied into the, the water bill and that's a private company. So it's like, you might as well put SCE and the gas company and AT&amp;T, might as well put it on, on the bill and we'll pay that too. That's how I feel. These are private companies and they should be able to go and, and if they have to go through the county and get paid, then so be it. But like I said, I'm, I'm a single, uh, single, I'm single and sometime I don't even put my trash out for a whole month. But when I get my water bill, I, I'm paying 20, 20-some dollars just for the water bill. I mean, the trash bill, if I use trash or not. And you got a lot of senior citizens here that doesn't eat that much and they got homes and stuff, they're not eating that much and they're not putting out that much trash. But their, their trash bill's 20-some dollars. And then, I think also that the money that, that we should get back, like in rebate, I mean, the trash company give you a rebate on the trash, on the ga, where trash is gas, the, the clipping on the yard and the, uh, the recycled materials and stuff like that. Can y'all put that against the water bill to bring the water bill down? I mean, that should be, that, that money that you guys get should come back to the people that paying for the, the water. Because the trash is on the water, you're getting a rebate. I, I guess they don't know that, but you are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor and council. How are you? Charles Strickland, great grandson of the key player of the civil rights movement and founder of the mother of all Baptist churches, African Zion Baptist Church, which is now an historical landmark. Great grandfather's name, Reverend Father Louis Rice, Booker T. Washington early member, raised and mentored by great grandfather. My uncle Professor Henry Rice's team appointed Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to carry on great grandfather's vision of a nonviolent movement. There is nothing wrong with our city of Compton that can't be cured with or by what is right for our city, the great city of Compton. Each and every council member has a fiduciary duty to ensure the day-to-day operations of our city is run correctly. And for the residents, the residents must give them a, a fair and equity, a fair and equity, fair and equity, let's say, um, action to complete these actions and not argue. I, I get kinda confused and messed up when I just hear arguing who's doing what and who's doing not and who's doing what. It's just, it's time for solutions to the problems. So I would, just would like to also ask, where does a resident or a city, a person who lives in the city go if they were a vendor or does work to ask our city for work or ask our city for the monies of the work that's owed to them? If a person came verbally with a verbal agreement, it's just like a written agreement. If you did work and asked the city for your pay and you didn't get it, where does a person go and who does he ask for his monies? Or is it everybody just does their own thing and this person works and get him get out the way? So, some form of, I hear about guns, it kinda confuses me then. So, I really don't know what's going on there, so it kinda blew me out the water for what I really came down here to speak about. So, it's just some kinda form of law and order needed to be implemented from our council over to the sheriff's department, where they, these are fine gentlemen, they try to do their best, but you never know who's in there doing what they want to do. So, where do you go as a person to seek work if you wanna have a team to help work clean the city of Compton? And where do you go to talk to if you have done work for the city of Compton and in a timely fashion, talk to each council member or council members about your work for monies received? Where does a person go?
Um, Mayor Protim.
Yes, ma'am.
Just, just for the record, we deal, me as a council person deal with policies. The only contract that I hire is the ci, city manager, so I'm not exactly sure where you go. And, and I would assume if you are owed money for work that you have done, you need to go to the person that asked you to do the work.
Okay, I was under a contract as a vendor for the city of Compton and I did the work and returned in invoices to this person, Mr. McKenzie, and to the, um, city manager, the former city manager.
Well, Mr. Strickland, I know this is not a back and forth, Madam Mayor, but I would suggest that you set up an appointment with the city attorney if you have not, or start with the, uh, Public Works Director. Because as far as hiring people that wanna help to the city, that's not one of the duties of the council.
Okay, I have spoken with the city, and I'm not gonna go back and forth, I have spoken with the city attorney about this issue. And Mrs. Rita, you being there, I'm sorry, my, Ms. McCoy is now, um, in, um, in Mrs. Arsenal's position, where Ms. Arsenal fought for us heavily. And the city attorney shared with me that something was going to go on, but it didn't and I'm not upset at him because the pressures of day-to-day operations, nothing. I think you told me that I, I turned in my invoice to pay.
Mr. Strickland, Mrs., excuse me, I'm gonna ask, um, the assistant city manager to get your information and then have the city manager contact you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean no harm to each other.
No, 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 no harm. And I just want you to know the assistant city manager's in the back and he will speak with you and get your information and then have the city manager or some, will designate someone to call you.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. McCoy. I didn't come to bruise anyone's feelings or anything.
Oh, no, not at all.
Okay, I appreciate you. Have a wonderful evening.
Mr. Strickland? Go out the back door, please. Renee Reynus? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I hope that my mouth is not working and no one can hear me. From radio, from TV land, I watch this session all the time. Some people you can hear clearly, some people you can't. But my bill is $160 a month and all of this trash needs to be thrown out. With the money that we pay out, you need to get new equipment and it needs to be a priority. Because we need to hear everyone's feet. Whether it's not important to you or not, it's very important to us in TV land. So I want TV land to hear every word that I say clearly. First of all, I want to let you know, I did not come to bury you, nor did I come to praise you. That's number one on the agenda. Number two, I wanna say something. And it's not meant to attack, because I have never been an attack person, but I have been a issue person. And especially when the issue just becomes so overwhelming as it is now. I'm not gonna talk about the mayor personally, I'm not gonna call her name, but I am gonna talk about the position. The position of mayor is very important. The mayor has one vote, she serves some morning, uh, sessions, she kisses babies, and she is a very important person. People look up to the mayor for leadership. Section 702 of the charter refers to the city attorney, alphabet H. And it says specifically, I'm gonna use it as an example, not talking about the city attorney, but I'm using what section, uh, 702, alphabet H says. It perfectly states, when the city attorney vacates his office, he turns over all the books, the records, and anything that pertaining to the city is left right here. Now, as far as I'm concerned, the position of mayor has been vacated. It has been vacated. Now, the citizens are here. The reason why I say it's been vacated, it didn't come on the agenda. The city manager doesn't have the authority to move her. He does not. It didn't get on the agenda, none of you voted on it. So how did this happen? This is a serious, very serious matter. Very, very serious. And you know what? I'm gonna ask the FBI, that I gave a tape to when I was on the college board where they sealed it. I'm gonna ask the FBI to unseal that tape because
Thank you, Ms. Hollyfield.
Something is going on here that's unhurried of. Our money has gone down the drain.
Thank you, Ms. Hollyfield. Colleen Davis? We can't do that, ma'am. No, we can't. No, we can't. No. No, we can't do that.
When, when you can, you know, I, three minutes, you're done. Where is that at? Where is this at?
Mr. City Attorney.
Where is that at?
One, one second, let Mr. City Attorney answer.
It's her time.
When it's been, when it's been done in the past.
She's giving me her time.
We've always done that.
And we're not attacking you.
Mrs. Hollyfield, wait one second and let the attorney, Mr. City Attorney answer.
Mayor Protim.
Yes.
I would say that each person is entitled to one presentation before to address this body. Sharing time would circumvent that policy where voices would be coming up multiple times from one person and not give everyone the opportunity to speak. I don't know offhand of other situations, I can't speak to that.
That's okay. I have another option. I'm gonna ask for spec, special privilege. I have that opportunity. I have that right. I have that right for special privilege.
Hold, hold on.
As, as a former elected official for 20 years in this city. I have that right.
One second. You have asked for special privilege, that's fine. It can be granted or denied. Would you agree with that?
Yes, I will.
Okay, Mayor Protim?
And how long do you get for special privilege? Five minutes? Two more minutes?
Just give her three minutes.
Three more minutes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. And I really want you to understand that I did not come down here to attack you. This is not an attack. This is serious, serious business. We have millions of dollars come up missing and you got investigations going on all over the city. Don't that look sorta strange that somebody would pack up and move everything they got over to another building that has nothing to do with this building? Although it's city property, of course it is. But you don't have a right to move our equipment, our files, or none of that to another area. Because then you tended to business over there on your own, the city manager is running rampant or can run rampant on his own, and who's watching who? So, thank you, I don't need three minutes, I think I said enough.
Thank you. Colleen Davis?
I didn't come prepared to speak, I came to relinquish my time to Emily Holyfield, but since that was not allowed, I do have something to say. For those that aren't aware of what Mrs. Holyfield was referring to, she was, was referring to the fact that the mayor has moved her office from, uh, City Hall to the Transit Center. Is that correct?
Yes.
And our problem with that is, who authorized it? I hear complaints from, I'm a member of Concerned Citizens of Compton and I belong to my neighborhood block club. And I hear complaints from, um, citizens of Compton that they come up here and address the mayor and the council and they get no response. And my answer to that is you get no response because you asked for no response. I don't come here that often, but when I come here, I feel that what I have to say is important. So what I'm asking tonight, and I'm asking, number one, I don't know if the mayor was within the, uh, if it was legal or policy for, um, granted for her to move her office. So I'm not gonna come up here and demand that she comes back, because I don't know under what circumstances she moved. So what I'm asking, council members, the city manager, the city attorney, and this falls under somebody's purview. So, somebody has to give me an answer. My, I'm asking, number one, is it against law or policy for the mayor to move her office out of City Hall just because she chose to? Or is, can she legally or, or can, can she legally do that? And if she cannot legally do that, what is the city attorney doing about it? And I would request, if you don't, you don't have to give me, if you have to research or whatever, maybe I won't get the answer tonight, but I would if I don't get it tonight, I'd like it within the next two weeks, please. And furthermore, if, whether it was allowed or not, who paid for the move? We had no knowledge of it and from what I gathered, none of you had any prior knowledge. So the mayor just decided, I'm just gonna move my office. Was city personnel used for that? Was our monies used for that? And another thing, what, I have 11 minutes. Ms. Hollyfield was correct, this is a dismal, um, sound system you have here, public address system. Sitting back there, you can't hear anything anybody's saying. Thank you, so I'll expect to hear something within the next two weeks.
Mr. City Attorney, were you trying to say something?
Yes, I, I'm unable to answer all the questions that was presented, but in an effort to minimize repetitive questions tonight and we can get through the item, I will say that in my position as city attorney, I am unaware of any law or policy that, in my position as city attorney, I am unaware of any law or policy that prohibits the changing or moving of an office. That is the part of the question that, in my position, I can respond to, and I hope that can go towards, if there's other, uh, questions tonight on the same subject, that would be my position. Now, um, Ms. Davis, I can, we can talk later, we can't go in a, in a
I know, that's your position, but is that the official response?
That's the official response from my seat that I occupy.
Clinton Stewart?
I'm, everything that I was going to talk about has already been said by the people that had the sign there about the potholes and things. My pet peeve was about the streets and stuff. I can add a couple of things I want to add to it. Um, it, while you were doing the potholes, if you would, uh, trim the trees that need to be trimmed, uh, I think the last time I was down here a few months ago, we had those two bags of trash that's out there on El Segundo by Grandy, where they were taken up, but now they got two more down there, and that's been there for about a couple of weeks. So those little things like that, I'm just talking about little things. Uh, trees trimmed, I want to add to that, and the, um, the lot between Alameda and, 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 um, Dollar High, uh, if you would just straighten that up a little bit, put some grass there or something, you know, make it look a little better, uh, because that takes away from the, the building itself. And another thing, it would be nice, I know they had a meeting the other day, uh, over there, and, uh, my daughter and everybody had a hard time finding the place, it would be nice if you had a nice sign there, on Alameda, saying this, Dollar High Center is here, you know, that kind of stuff, a good sign, not, not, not little old bitty sign, I mean, nice sign. Those little things that you'd add to, while you were doing the potholes and that kind of stuff. And, uh, only thing about the potholes is this, I think when this mayor went, came in here the first time, or about five years ago, whatever it was, we had this big meeting down here, and, uh, they were going to do all the streets, had fifty million dollars and that kind of stuff, they're going to do the streets and, and all that stuff, you know what I mean? And, uh, it only came about, about, just about election time, they did, a little after it, did half of Central, and now, near the election time, we did half of Wilmington. Uh, and, uh, so my problem is, I, one thing, where did the fifty million dollars go to? And, uh, the next thing is, do the streets, Alameda, uh, Central all the way out to the freeway, and Allen, and, um, Wilmington all the way out to the town. And you did, you did, uh, some Compton Boulevard over here, you did, that was nice, but what happened to the lane markers? I don't see anything, no paint, I don't see any paint down there. You need to do those, it's little things, it's not a big thing, it's little things that bothers me. It would make it look so much better, you know, uh, if you did that. And the people, there shouldn't be some little, uh, some little city ordinance, but people that, that have these houses and have these buildings on, on our main street, if they were just sort of spruced up a little bit, that would make it look better. Those little things, that's all, that's all, that's, so, that's all I'm here for.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you. Don Smith?
Uh, greetings to the city council and, uh, city manager, I see, uh, our mayor is absent. I heard today where, uh, our mayor Brown will be running for, uh, a new office for Congress, and, uh, my concern is, how can she expect people to vote for her when she leaves us with all these empty promises? She walked up and down my street, I'm the president of one hundred and thirty-sixth Street Block Club, by the way, so I think I get six minutes, but my question is, when she walked up and down our street and promised six years ago that she was going to resurface our streets, do reconstruction of our streets, and it hadn't even been done, how can we support something like that? It seems to me that that's just been empty promises. I do have a slideshow available that shows some of the damaged streets in my area that have not been repaired, and our streets have not been resurfaced in more than over thirty years, thirty years. And, uh, just for clarification, Central was done by the contractor that did the Brickyard Project, and from what I understand, Wilmington was done as an attempt to, uh, move homes and, uh, make, uh, Compton a centralized zone for, uh, shipping and warehousing of, for cannabis industry. I think that's the motivation was behind, uh, redoing Wilmington. So I don't want people to be, uh, misled about the actions that were done by, by our, our, our city government here in Compton. And it's a travesty that she ran on a reelection, and we're missing the key people, we're missing the city treasurer when we have an issue of millions of dollars missing out of, out of the, uh, general fund, uh, we're missing the mayor, when we have important issues like safety for our streets, because it's not purely a, it's beyond repairing cars, three thousand dollars a car, two thousand dollars a car. I have a car valued at twenty-six hundred, and it exceeded the value to repair the vehicle from damages done from the streets. I had a thirty-six thousand dollar truck I sold because of damages from the streets. So a lot of people are incurring damages, but they're not putting their claim in within the thirty days. So it's a thirty day period that you have to put your claim in for damages to your car. I don't know when, uh, if we're going to be able to show some of the slides for District One, for the streets.
Did you bring it?
Well, I thought I, I'd done that, attached that to emails, I, I have them in my phone.
Yeah.
A lot of them are deleted now. But everybody knows how the streets are, my street has been paved, repaved in over thirty, thirty years. And it, and it's a travesty that we're on level three taxes, our property taxes are on level three, and we don't get, it's like taxation without representation. And it, I have three more minutes because I'm a block club president, one hundred and thirty-sixth street, you can reset the timer.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. And, uh, I just think, I want it to be known, I want it to be known, when she starts her campaign for Congress.
No, but we've rendered someone else
When she starts her campaign for Congress, I want the voters to remember
给她 special privilege
The promises
Wait, wait, Mr. Smith, we, we're going to give him a special privilege, if anything, because we don't give six minutes to block club presidents.
No, we don't.
No. So, but, but, Mr. Smith, um, you know, I got your pictures, and I sent them over to city manager, and, you know, I'm going to ask, Mr. City Manager, if you could bring back an agenda item to re, to, whatever the case may be, resurf- resurface, re, uh, what is it called, the three things we do? To rehabilitate, and we need to start with Elva and one hundred and thirty-sixth, so can you bring that back? Elva and one hundred and thirty-sixth street. We need to get started in those neighborhoods. That's why a lot of the people are, are here tonight to talk about those streets, because those streets were on the list over five years ago to be repaired. And I'm, I've ran out of excuses for the people, so we already have to hide on the list, that should be broken, break ground in June, and I'm asking, Mr. City Manager, for Elva and one hundred and thirty-sixth to be brought back on the agenda item.
Oh, and just one last thing, uh, I've been, uh, appointed to, uh, a commission with the, uh, South Coast Air Quality Management, and it's concerns with what is in the asphalt, and the asphalt is being airborne from cars, and it's also being airborne from the street sweepers dry streeping, dry sweeping the streets. And it's pictures that I've documented, that shows a cloud of dust going down behind the street sweeper. So if we don't have money, why are we paying the street sweeper to continually cause further damage to our streets? I don't even understand that. And it's, and it's jeopardizing our health because it's carcinogens that's in the asphalt from nineteen fifty-one that we're exposed to. And I'd just like to close saying thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Madam, Madam, yes, Madam, Madam Protim. Uh, the gentleman was speaking in, in, uh, regards to the streets, and there are a lot of streets, not just in one district, but throughout this whole city, that really need to be addressed, need to be repaired. So one of the streets that I have asked, been talking to the city manager about over and over again, it's been, uh, Mer Street, because that is a main street that people travel constantly in order to get a, across the city. So I am asking you, Mr. City, uh, Manager, if you would come back with something regarding Mer Street, so we'll know exactly when we plan to start addressing that issue there with Mer as well, because that street is, is used as, as, as often as Long Beach Boulevard, as lo, as often as Compton Boulevard, and the rest of those main streets, so if you would please bring that back, I really would appreciate it.
Yeah, well, first, we're going to get to those streets that was on that list six years ago, just so you know.
No, I know they're still on the list, and that's why I said they, they, they already brought it to us last week in regards to those streets, those streets, from what my understanding is, that he's talking about those streets is already in, in our, is going, is getting ready to be, uh, getting ready to be repaired.
Mayor Protim, can we move on?
Yeah, so that's what he said, so thank you. Madam, uh, Protim, Madam, Madam Protim.
Ms. Kelly?
Good evening, I am Joyce Kelly, and I'm from District Three. First off, thank you, uh, Tana, but you are arguing about the streets. Tana, please go over on Acacia, I was just over there yesterday, right off of Valander Going South towards Green Leaf. It's a shame, it's horrible. For a couple of years, I've been bringing this up, and it's still bad over there. It, it's, it's no way you could dodge those potholes. If I were those people living over there, I'd be in here every day. But, Mr. Uh, City Attorney, I want to know what law are you quoting? Because you people make up laws all the time. Have you checked in ethics laws to see about that one? But when we do not authorize, we say, you guys, you always say you're policymakers, but what happened? Dropped the ball again. Now, you guys made that, you created that monster, that monster that went all over the country pretending that she was holier than thou and God's gift to this city. Look what she's done to this city. Never, ever, in the fifty-two years I've been here, have I seen this city looking like a third world country. It's ridiculous, and I know every last one of you drive outside of Compton. When you drive outside of Compton, you see what you see, and you don't see the trash. Maybe you're just immune to it, but there's no trash all over the streets anywhere else. The streets aren't ripped up, torn up with sinkholes, not potholes no, any longer, but see what Asia Brown doesn't know, what I'll say behind her back, I'm woman enough to say it to her face, no matter where she runs, she can't hide from the FBI. She's going to get caught. She has spent our money, and ask her, people, where's that nine million dollars she brought back, she said, from President Barack Obama for my brother's keepers? In less than a year, what happened? She got rid of the gang bangers and crime rose again. She, I don't know who sits on that AQMD, AQMD, uh, board, but you should be at the meetings when they talk about the cancer causing agents in this city. No one was there to represent the city, I, except, Mr. City Manager, you did have an assistant there. But remember this, Asia sits on MTA. Check to see if there are grants or cash associated with having a business on MTA's lines. Check that out. Check out and see why is she renting property all up and down Compton Boulevard? Ask her how did she, is she buying a five hundred thousand dollar house on a salary of six hundred dollars a month? Ask her some of those questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Bone?
Lynn Bone, City of Compton, I agree with all the speakers that have come up here, and I'm so glad to see so many people here, Pastor Fish, I'm glad to see you here as well. God is so good. You know, I'm going to say, two, three years ago, well, not even that long ago, I just, I said God hadn't forsaken us, and I knew that, but it's like now, it's just rolling down the hill, he's just bringing us all home. Years, I was bringing invoices up here as to what was being done in this city, and no one wanted to agree with it. Since the state controller has come in, and the letter that is being put on Facebook and whatever, I just want to let you guys know, it's not complete, but it's just a document of the administrative and internal, internal accounting controls. This is not for the whole city yet, so you wait until you actually see the audit for the whole city, which is going to go department by department and accounts by accounts. Mr. City Attorney, I was trying to hold on to myself over there, but you do not tell the truth. All of you sitting up there, remember, the night when that, the two people from the Seven Eleven came here, and they complained and cried, and then the following week, they came back. Ms. Brown, Ms. Klinkscale Brown, aloud, she even made, uh, the attempt to tell the gentleman, use your wife's time to continue, because the letter that he was reading from was her letter. So, you know, don't sit up here and make up stuff that's not true. The other thing is that item number five, I just have to address this. This city manager, who was put in this position by five people up here that didn't meet one requirement that they required for a city manager, has the audacity to have a internal director to ask for more money to clean up this city. Why don't you just set dumpsters on every corner and let the people from the different cities come and drop it off? Because what you need to do is bring code enforcement back and let them get out there and make some money by finding and, and finding these people that are dropping off trash within this city. And the last thing is this move of Mrs. Klinkscale Brown. People that don't know the history, when Eric Perdón was in office, he had made mention that the council members need to go out to the parks at least twice a week so they can meet with their people, because the parking here is so bad. So if someone is in the park, I'm not saying that I sit up here and I'm for that person or whatever, but I know it's been said before, but to go into a building that we pay for using our lease revenue bonds, the money that was lost, is irresponsible and ridiculous. And part of, the main part of this audit is because of misuse of public funds, and majority of it is the city managers. So you can sit there like you want to, Mr. Rambo, and snitching on the sheriff is one thing, but that's not going to keep you out of trouble here in the city of Compton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. F. Hernandez. Compton Boulevard and the rest of the streets are in total disaster. Compton Boulevard got a lipstick coat to shut us up and say, you're working on it. Where are the roadway markings? It is not good enough. We deserve better. You hate hearing our complaints, here's a proposal. Listen, make a weekly presentation by the Director of Public Works. There's an artist by the name of Carlos Cruz Diaz. He is a world renowned artist, and his work includes crosswalk paintings. He brings tangible art outside. Instruct the city manager, city planner, public works director, and the Workforce Development Center to look at his work and come up with a proposal that that incorporates troubled youth. Partner with mentors within ninety days. Why don't you recruit from Compton City residents, specifically those that were caught tagging, and have them put together a canvas on the streets of Compton? Make Compton Boulevard into an arts district of sorts. We will attract jobs for our community and our future. I've said it before, partner with Compton College and create a program that focuses on street repairs, tree trimming. We have enough for them to practice and perfect their careers with. This costs money. I found one-hundred-thousand dollars from the failed election attempt to give yourselves an exorbitant raise. Or, the one-thousand dollars each of you receive for your car allowance. Or, how about the amazing penny tax that was going to cure everything? We have a vibrant city. We have many affluent and successful people that were raised in Compton. What do they all have in common? They left. You see, there is a stalemate occurring in the city, a ferocious inability to properly address the issues this city has. There are many problems. We don't have enough time allocated to mention everything, beginning with council. These agendas never propose anything to fix our city unless it's getting close to election time. This council's priorities are all over the place. We aren't complaining. We aren't venting. We are calling you to action. Fix something completely. I've also mentioned the traffic signal synchronization along the blue line. To close, since this council won't do it, I'll do it. Thank you to the sheriff's deputies for their efforts to save an infant's life a few weeks ago on Willabrook and School Street. They placed the infant in the backseat and raced over to the hospital. This is not the first time they do this. No one acknowledges their efforts. Thank you to the Captain Thatcher and to your deputies.
Madam City Clerk? This will be the last speaker. We have to move on. We have two public hearings.
All right. Good evening, Council. I'm the president for the Tahata Block Club, but I'm not here tonight for that. I'm here regarding what the concerned citizens, and I'd just like for all the concerned citizens to stand up. Just to let you know that we stand strong and we fight hard. So, I'm gonna go back to what reason while I'm here is that Jana had a town hall meeting a couple of weeks ago, and at the town hall meeting, I explained to her that Tahata needed to be repaired. Her director came to me and said that it'd be done within two weeks. And I was going on the third week. I still haven't, Tahata still haven't been fixed. I'm just wanting to find out tonight, can we get somebody there this week to fix work on that street? Tahata is a main street. The fire department come down that street. And it's kinda bad when you have somebody in an emergency vehicle that's jumping up and down to make it to the hospital. Okay? And the second thing, I wanted to say something to Craig. I'd like to get your attention, Craig, if I can, because I feel that when men talk to men, we look at each other. I mean, that's how I grew up in Chicago.
Address me by my title, then.
Okay. Sure, Mr. Cornwell, City Attorney.
Let's go.
My wife put a claim in, and the claim was to fix her automobile. And it was eight-hundred dollars, or it could've been less, but your office denied the claim. So, she filed a claim with the courts. And then, it's okay. So, you're gonna win some, you're gonna lose some. But, my wife did lose, but the reason that she lost, I really felt kinda bad that you train your paralegals to start off lying in court. She came to court and said that the city was not aware of any potholes on Tahata. So, we couldn't appeal it because of small claims, but don't send your paralegals out there, man, and lying. Everybody knows these streets ain't been fixed over fifty or something years, and you could send somebody out there to say that. I know people in here in Compton, the street has been repaired. I need a new truck. I'm not gonna buy a new truck until my street get repaired. But, I just wanna say that. I don't come down here and speak a lot because I, this is, I don't have any comments to say about that. But, I just basically want, I'm fighting for Tahata. And the people that come and drive it down Tahata, I apologize. I've been fighting for this since November, and I still haven't gotten it done. And your director has said he gonna fix the streets, Jana. I appreciate if you could just follow up. Sorry, thank you.
Ma'am, that was the last speaker.
I'm sorry?
We need to call for a five-minute recess. That was the last speaker.
I was standing here. It's gonna be very quick, I promise you.
Please.
My name is Reverend Dr. Mello Desai. I'm originally from Watts, but my main concern is the youth of Los Angeles, which includes Compton and Inglewood. It is clear that people have to pay to play. It is clear that there is a lot of corruption. This reminds me of the Board of Supervisors this morning. The person that is in between all this is Margaret Lee Thomas, okay? So, he supports Asia Brown, who supports whatever. But, we need to know who's supporting the children, who's supporting the people. I'm running for the House of Representatives not because I'm a politician, I'm a filmmaker. But, I have to get into law because there's a bunch of buffoons that people so-called voted for who have an ulterior motive. Their agenda is not for the people, it's clear. Nothing's gonna change. So, what I'm asking is that for the people to come together to continue. We have a class action suit that was filed December twenty-eighth concerning the county, Board of Supervisors, which includes Compton. We're not gonna be talking and complaining and marching and be like, "Oh, this is injustice." No, we're gonna ask you to please put your money where your mouth is because our children are dying. So, Anthony Weber, as you notice, was the most recent victim, not too far from here in Athens. Sixteen years old, shot by sheriffs. Now, the funding that's going to the sheriffs that shot this boy, who you're labeling as a gang member, have you guys had put the tax money into digital centers, into resource centers, with these, all these old-ass empty buildings that's sitting there, we're looking at them? We need them developed into digital resource centers. And there are sponsors that are helping to do that, but what's blocking it is the red tape that you guys are putting. So, I'm asking you to please. If we're coming to tell you the same thing over and over again, that means you don't care or you're not listening, or it doesn't affect you directly or your children directly, so you don't care. We're asking for you to please do us a favor. Do not sit in a seat that you know are not representing the people. The pothole situation has been long since, I can remember, since I was little. And I'm not even from Compton, but I have a lot of constituents and children in schools that I represent, that I teach, and they're all the same. When it comes to black or brown, we are being labeled, we are being robbed from our own people. So, I'm saying to move forward, I'm not really trying to convince the older generation. You guys have failed, as we see with the children. You guys, you label the kids as lazy. You label the millennials as that they think they owe something. What have you taught them, though? That they can say that I'm empowered and I can change the world? Nothing. They're dodging bullets, as Anthony unfortunately couldn't because sixteen of them hit him. But, he has a nine-month-old daughter that we have to make sure she has a future because you guys definitely are not. So, I'm not here to really put you down, but it's telling when the mayor is not even here. It says a lot. So, we're not worried about the corruption. You just sit back and wait.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, I'd like to call for a five-minute recess, please. Motion, please.
Counselperson Zarita Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McCoy.
Yes.
Good evening. It is seven twenty and past time for the Compton City Council meeting.
Motion to reconvene.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to reconvene the meeting, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Counselperson Zarita.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McCoy.
Yes. Now, Madam City Clerk, may we convene the Compton City Council meeting?
Yes. It's now time for the five thirty-five P.M. public hearing to approve a proposed subdivision to subdivide an existing ninety-three thousand five ten square foot industrial lot into three separate smaller parcels for future development as a retail commercial center at twenty-two hundred West Compton, I'm sorry, West Artesia Boulevard, and we need a motion to open the hearing.
Sumo. Second.
Roll call.
Counselperson Zarita.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McCoy.
Yes. Mister City Manager.
Mister Robert Delgado was going to do the presentation for us. Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. Tonight's project is a three-lot subdivision for a industrial piece of property located at twenty-two hundred West Artesia Boulevard. This slide depicts the aerial view of the property in question outlined in green. The one building to the north is the existing school credit union building, which will be removed and demolished as part of the overall project and development of this site. This slide also provides the context for the area surrounding the subdivision, showing industrial buildings to the east and south, the freeway, the ninety-one freeway to the north, and city of Carson to the west. This slide depicts the general plan, yet land use designation for the site and the surrounding area, which is industrial. This slide depicts the zoning for the site, which is heavy manufacturing. And this slide depicts the actual subdivision of the property into three lots, one, two, and three. Parcel one is slated for a future In-N-Out restaurant. Parcel two is proposed for a future Autozone. And lastly, parcel three is a multi-tenant building lot, which is anticipated to be for a Waba Grill, a Jimmy John's Restaurant, and a Dunkin' Donuts. All three lots have street access and will have two points of access. Parcel one is the northwest corner property, which is the In-N-Out lot, and that restaurant is proposed at thirty-eight hundred and seventy-six square feet. Parcel two, which will be the Autozone building, is, or will contain, a six thousand seven hundred and eighteen square foot building. And again, parcel three, the multi-tenant building, is ninety-six fifty-nine hundred square feet. Staff recommends the City Council approve tentative parcel map number seven five zero zero two, and this concludes the staff's presentation.
Thank you. Any public announcement, I'm sorry, public comments?
Yeah, Robert Ray Compton, I'm in authority to say I'm a little bit confused on this subdivision. It's my understanding that In-N-Out Burger was going to come into that corner. Now, all of the In-N-Out Burger that I have seen are pretty large operations, and to chop that property up into three lots, I'm wondering if there's going to be enough room for everybody, because In-N-Out, when I've seen, they take up a lot of space. So I'm really concerned, is In-N-Out still coming? You said restaurant, but you didn't mention the name. But every In-N-Out I've seen has had a huge building with a lot of parking, and I'm wondering if they're going to have a big enough place.
David Irons, resident of Compton. I think this is a good idea. Anytime you bring commerce into the city is a good idea. And there's so many people that stand in your way. Hey, man, let him do his thing, man. He ain't rezoning. He said he gonna cut it in half, or cut it in three. Some people do not understand real estate laws. I had real estate for a long time. You're not rezoning the place, you're just cutting into different parcels. That's like me buying some property, and I want different parcels in the property. You do it. I think that's a good job. I've been on your side a couple of times lately.
Thank you.
Do I have your undivided attention? If so, I'll begin. My name is Benjamin Holyfield, and I'm from the great third district where this project is located. I approve of it. You have to understand also that when we split it up, we'll have more jobs and more prosperity in the city. And by the way, that area is the second largest industrial center in the state. So every time we can add a few more buildings or whatever, and add more jobs, we should. And that's my position as the Compton Business Chamber of Commerce, is to bring business and jobs and grow and get rid of some of those taxes in the city. Thank you so much. So I approve of it and want you to approve of it, and anything else that's going to bring jobs and prosperity to Compton. Thank you.
Limbo in city of Compton. I was at the, um, excuse me, planning convention meeting when the In-N-Out was discussed. And in agreeance with Mister Ray, you know, any In-N-Out you see, they always have lines of people. There, it's a fast restaurant, and the food is healthy. I'm in agreeance with that, but the spacing for the cars and stuff, I'm kind of questionable with that. Then the other sit-down restaurant, I'm questionable as far as the parking for there. I'd love for that to be in Compton. But another Autozone, I don't think so. We have one almost on every corner in the city of Compton. And if you notice, I mean, Metro is going everywhere now. So I mean, what is the need for another auto parts store? But, um, the business, the group that's bringing this in, I want to say thank you. I appreciate it, but it's just the parking and the overflow for the cars and the Autozone. Thank you.
Counsel comments?
Uh, motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing.
Sumo. Second.
Roll call.
Counselperson Zarita.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McCoy.
Yes.
Counsel comment.
Counsel comments? Okay. No counsel comments, then?
That's, um, did they not say the name of the sit-down restaurant because they don't know yet, or?
The restaurant is the In-N-Out. Mister Delgado, what did you say about the restaurant?
The restaurant on Lot One, which is the northernmost corner where the school building, or the school credit union building is currently located, will be a future In-N-Out restaurant, sit-down with a drive-thru. The parcel three, which is on the south, right here, that's a multi-tenant building, which is slated at this point to have a Waba Grill, a Dunkin' Donuts, and a Jimmy John's Restaurant.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Do we have any, um, projection dates of the project, if it's approved tonight?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. I don't know the construction schedule, but the applicant is in the audience and can provide that if you wish.
That's fine. Thank you.
Can you, one more question. What's the square footage of the In-N-Out property?
The lot for the In-N-Out restaurant is fifty thousand one hundred and eighty-nine square feet. The actual size of the In-N-Out restaurant itself will be three thousand eight hundred and seventy-six square feet.
And do we happen to know the average size of In-N-Out burgers?
Excuse me, what was that?
Do we happen to know the average size, square footage of us?
Uh, no. I don't know the average size of a typical In-N-Out restaurant.
One last question, just for my information. Does that include the old vacant Coco's building as well?
No, that site is not a part of the project. It is really what you see here in, within the yellow lines.
Okay, got you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sumo.
Yes. Now, on the item, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, the item is item number two, which is a resolution of the City Council, city of Compton, approving tentative parcel map, map number seven five zero zero two, to subdivide an existing two thousand four ninety-one acre lot into three separate smaller parcels for future development as a retail commercial center for a property located at twenty-two hundred West Artesia Boulevard. Assesses parcel map seventy-three nineteen double oh three, one oh two.
Sumo. Second.
Roll call.
Discussion.
Discussion.
You know, I just want to be perfectly clear on this. The, the parking and the, the area for the drive-thru, is it, is there adequate space? I wish I knew the, the size of, um, the size of, um, most of the In-N-Out burgers, because we do know that the lines are very long, and the parking issue. So is the parking, is it satisfies the code?
Yes, it does. That was one of our concerns when we approved the CUP for the drive-thru and the center as a whole, knowing In-N-Out's history and that their drive-throughs frequently generate more stacking than a typical McDonald's or Burger King would. Code requires a minimum of five stacking vehicles, and I believe for this In-N-Out drive-thru, we had, I believe, eight or nine completely within the drive-thru stacking, and we allowed for some overage that be entirely within parking lot, excuse me, parcel one, and not result in any blockage of any aisleways.
Okay. Thank you. Any more question? Madam City Clerk?
It's now time for the five forty-five P.M. public hearing to consider an appeal of a variance denial to waive the, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Motion's on the floor.
Motion.
Roll call. Counselperson Zarita.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McCoy.
Yes.
It's now time for the five forty-five P.M. public hearing to consider an appeal of a variance denial to waive the requirement to provide an onsite garage and to permit an unauthorized converted garage to remain as living space at five twenty-two West Peach Street, and we need a motion to open the hearing.
Sumo. Second.
Roll call.
Counselperson Zarita.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McCoy.
Yes. Mister City Manager.
Our planning, our acting planning director, Mister Delgado, will also present this particular item. Thank you. The application before you tonight is an appeal of a planning commission denial for a variance seventeen dash zero 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 five, located at five twenty-two West Peach Street. And this request is to allow, or to continually allow, the illegal garage conversion and not require a replacement garage. You're looking at an aerial view of the property in question, which is encircled by the green, and it shows the surrounding residential neighborhoods and additionally the lot sizes. This slide depicts the zoning, which is on the left in the yellow is low-density residential, which is your basic single-family zone. On the right is the general plan, land use classification, which shows it as, excuse me, I had that reversed. The left is the general plan designation, which shows it as low-density residential. On the right is the zoning classification, which is medium-density residential. The house in question was built in nineteen fifty with a one-car garage. Building Department records indicate that the house was originally four hundred and sixteen square feet, included a one-bedroom den, a kitchen, a bathroom, and the one-car garage. The lot itself is twenty-five by one hundred feet, or twenty-one, excuse me, twenty-five hundred square feet. The property owner in question received a correction notice in twenty seventeen due to a fire resulting in inspectors going in and noticing the garage was converted. Further research indicated that there were no permits ever issued for that garage conversion. It is not clear, because there are no records, when the garage was actually converted. It could have been converted anytime between nineteen fifty, when it was built, and nineteen eighty-eight, when the current owners purchased the property. At that time, when it was purchased in nineteen eighty-eight, the owners did not get the required pre-sale inspection, which would have revealed at that time the garage was not legally converted. This slide depicts the floor plan of the house with the one-car garage shown with the red X, the driveway, and the general lot configuration itself. This slide depicts the floor plan. On the right, excuse me, on the left is the original floor plan showing the garage. On the right is the existing condition showing the garage converted into two bedrooms. Of note also is, besides the garage being illegally converted without permits, is the bedrooms themselves do not comply with the current zoning code requirement that all bedrooms have closets. They are just bedrooms themselves. Lastly, staff makes no recommendations on an appeal pursuant to section thirty dash twenty-six K of the Compton Municipal Code. The City Council shall render its decision on an appeal within thirty days after conclusion of the appeal hearing and has the power to take one of four actions. One, affirm the decision of the planning commission, in this case, which would result in the garage being converted back to its former use as a garage. Two, amend the decision of the planning commission. Or three, reverse the decision of the planning commission and allow the owners to maintain the use of the garage as two bedrooms and not require its replacement. Four, refer the matter back to the planning commission for further consideration without rendering a decision tonight. This concludes the staff's presentation.
The floor is now open for audience comment.
Robert Ray Compton, I have a definite opinion on this. As my understanding, there was at one time an ordinance, every single-family residence in the city of Compton must have a garage. I don't know if that's still in place or not, but that was my understanding. At one time, there were some garage conversions that were approved and grandfathered in. However, it appears this is not only done illegally without permit, it is unsafe, it does not meet any requirements whatsoever. They were denied, they were given notices to repair or whatever. We need to uphold the planning commission's decision. Either they convert those two rooms back to the original garage, there's not room in the property, if there were room on the property to build an external garage, then that could be considered if they brought the two bedrooms up to code. But there is too much that is unsafe, not code, and in my other position, run across, I'm all about safety and saving lives. And, uh, this definitely is not safe, and they can either go back to make it a garage again, or abandon the whole property. But this is not safe, and we should uphold the planning commission's denial to let them live in this manner.
A garage is a French word for a house for cars. That's what it means. And I was looking at this, there's a lot of homeless people out here. And if I become homeless or sell my house, all I gotta do is drive my garage and sleep in my van. So when you have stuff attached to property, real estate is something that's attached to the land. Now, these people deserve a place to stay because of the homelessness. All you have to do is have a cover. All you have to do is have a cover. Garage is supposed to have a cover over the house. I mean, over the, yeah, I mean, a carport. So to put somebody on the street is evil. We have a homeless problem right now. And so what you're doing is telling these people that they can't make their place out of two bedrooms to accommodate some homeless people or would-be homeless and have a whole lot of people living in the same house. I converted a garage into two units before because I, on a hundred and eighteenth and Broadway. I, I was trying to help out the homeless and, um, ended up almost getting stabbed and, you know, stuff like that, because homeless people are kind of different. But I am for the homeless, but I'm not the right person to supervise the homeless because I'm too kind-hearted. But you don't put people on the street. I, I could bring that thing up. I've been building houses since I'm fifty years. I could bring that thing up to code. All you gotta do is bring it up to code. And if you could drive in there without it being up above the ground, you could turn it back into a garage. I don't know how long that, uh, building is, but a garage, you have to have a door. Now, when I turn my, when I turn my garage into a place for me to sleep, because you put washers and dryers in garages now, so you turn it into a laundry room. Then you put a water heater in the garage because they don't put water heaters in the house. Now, if I put a bed in my garage in some cop, carp... Next week.
My name is Bill Kimpton. I file for the variance for this project. And first of all, we're here because the planning commission, uh, when we were presenting our case to them, could not make a determination because there was not a city attorney present. Um, so we're here to respond to the findings of the planning, planning department. Item one, that a garage conversion would not be in compliance with all applicable provisions of the zoning ordinance, CMC, section thirty dash twenty-one. No new enclosed garage is proposed as part of this application. The subject property, property, property contains adequate space to construct a replacement garage space, which will meet the required setbacks. It is my understanding, this is my response, it is my understanding that the variance application provision is for what these kinds of situations are. It should be pointed out that there are already existing non-conforming properties in the surrounding area, areas that are similar in design and intent to what we are requesting with our variance application. Permit status, the statement that he, the statement that there is adequate space to construct a replacement garage is incorrect. Unless the code allows for a garage to extend into a setback, it is not physically possible to build a new garage on the property that does not encroach into the existing front setback as the site is substandard, being only twenty-five feet wide and two hundred square, two thousand five hundred square feet. However, it is possible to create at least one off-street parking space, which we have, which we have done, which is what the owners have been using for as long as they have owned the house. And now I would turn this over to Greg Rabidall.
Good evening. So I wanted to address a couple of the other, uh, planning department findings. The item number two that they gave us for their findings was, uh, the variance will constitute a grant of special privileges inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and in the same zone. I want to address this first because I'm gonna do this in parts. First of all, the statement of granting special privileges that are inconsistent is incorrect because there's already records of existing properties with the conditions that we are requesting. There are properties that have this condition permitted. There are, there may or may not be other properties that have the same condition without it being permitted. The next section is this idea, uh, it says self-created hardships may not be considered among the factors that might constitute special circumstances. A self-created hardship results from the actions taken by present or prior owners of the property that consciously create the very difficulties or hardships claimed as the basis for an application for a variance. We haven't really requested the variance, um, for a hardship that was created by the previous owner. The hardship is actually economic. I, I'm fairly confident that if the owners of the property could afford to build a second floor to create enough bedrooms for themselves, their children and their grandchildren, they'd be more than happy to do so. So the idea of, of this statement is, is, it seems a bit inflammatory to me, and it's totally incorrect. Says, the suggestion that this is a self-created hardship is an unfair assessment because what was failed to be pointed out, sir, which I'm gonna let you know about, is that the, the owners had a fire in their house. The fire, the house was practically burnt down. So everything that potentially could have been built incorrectly and not up to code has been rebuilt. A building code was issued for all of these repairs. Everything was built to code, everything was inspected, all the inspections were passed. Even the final inspection was passed. The only issue that's holding them up from moving back into their house is, is this issue right here, this variance. So there are no danger issues in terms of, uh, the building or the construction at all. The final item is, uh, which I found, to be quite honest, a little amusing. A garage conversion is not in conformance with the goals and objectives of the general plan and the CMC zoning or land use designation. The granting of the variance will be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other properties in the vicinity. As noted previously, the garage was converted at sometime between nineteen fifty and nineteen eighty-eight. It hasn't caused any injuriousness to the community, hasn't caused any danger to the community, hasn't caused any problems at all. In fact, the city wouldn't even have known about it if there hadn't been a fire. So again, to say something like this as part of their findings is, again, it's a bit inflammatory. It's incorrect, it's inaccurate, and it's kind of prejudicial, I guess. So the exist, the house had been existing with its two extra bedrooms for as long as we know, and nobody knew anything about it. It should have been, you know, it was perfectly fine. In fact, the building inspector never commented on it, never questioned it, finalized his construction inspection, and everything was okay. I think it would be important to note that the, as stated previously, the building inspections have all been done, everything has been built up to code. And, uh, I think that if we can finalize the approval of this variance, we can let these poor people back in their house. They've been out of their house for over a year. Okay? A, a husband and wife, their child and their young grandchildren have been living, for all intents and purposes, homeless because of this situation. So I would ask that you guys please consider these things and grant us approval for our variance. Thank you.
My name is Rick Nicholson. I met the Hernandezes about a year and a half ago when they had suffered this tragedy of a fire in their house. We've been dealing with this for a year and a half, between their insurance company letting them down, their mortgage company letting them down. Now, a couple of facts about the house. The width of that room is nine foot wide by sixteen feet deep. There's no way a car can go into that garage. So common sense would tell you, how are we gonna put it back as a garage if a car cannot fit in the garage? Number one. Number two, there is closets in the, in those bedrooms because that was one of my correction notices that I corrected and put two closets in both bedrooms. So it's funny that these erroneous statements of unconforming construction and no closets are being done. Here's my thing. There's a man, there's a family here. Let's treat them with dignity and respect. They bought the house. They bought the house as it was. They didn't do this construction illegally. They bought the house that way. They've lived that way. They've raised their children in that house. This is ludicrous to me to think that anybody could say, put it back as a garage. They own a Ford Explorer. How are they gonna park a Ford Explorer in a nine-by-sixteen-foot-deep room? It's not gonna happen. So please, use some common sense here. They already suffered one travesty. Their mother has been in a hospital because of a nervous breakdown because of this situation, because of the mortgage company not releasing the funds for this project, not treating them with respect. So I'm asking you up here to give them the same respect that I've done. I've been down here three nights to, to sit through this. Please, give them that respect that I've given them and treated them with respect. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jolyon. I actually grew up in that house. I guess I might have been seven when we moved in. I can't remember the house anything different than what it is. And like this man said, that it's unsafe, that's not true. It's a home, two bedrooms, we grew up in it, and I hope my, my grandkid grew up in it. We just wanna go back home. We moved to Compton, we wanna see the city grow, and it is growing. And it sucks that we're missing out on it. All we have is these potholes that we need to be fixed and my house to go back to. I see around the community, there's all these houses going up, and, and ours is the same. It's a small house, but we still wanna go back in it. There's nothing wrong with it, it's up to code. We don't know what, what else to do to it. There's no purpose for it to have a garage in it. There's no need. We bought the house as-is, and we wanna continue living as-is. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cindy here. And, um, one of the things I wanted to let you guys know is that my family actually moved into Compton in nineteen ninety-six, and we have the same problem right now. Um, we moved in as, as-is, and last year, we almost lost our house to somebody saying that they were gonna help us with refinancing, but ended up putting the deed into their name, and it's been a battle. So we almost ended up homeless as well. We have a home that is exactly like this. But last year, my brother ended up purchasing a home, and we received it, we received it as-is. We have a back house, which we tried to put in a room, and your, um, building planner has denied us twice that, um, the plans, even though we changed them around to the first time they said they came back. We changed everything around, and then the second time we got denied. Today, this morning, my family and I woke up to a lien notice for the same thing that we have a garage built in there. But unfortunately, we never had any inspector come in and ask us to look around and see if we can open it, because we do still open it as a garage. So it is one of the things that we noticed as a community. I'm not the only one that's starting to receive these lien notices on something that you guys were incompetent to kind of come around and even notify the family of, hey, maybe there's gonna be an inspector. They just came and said that you, under your regulations. But one of the things that we noticed is that, um, the city, as it goes into a forty-five million dollar deficit, the permit, the permit increase went in, it actually started this year as of January twenty eighteen, correct? There was an increase on the permits for these garages. So one of the things that strikes me is that now we, as the city goes into more of a deficit, you're starting to put liens on everybody's homes for something that was incompetent of your building inspection, um, department. It is sad that a lot of us are gonna start getting these liens, and luckily for my family, we're gonna be able to pay it and not be homeless. But there's a lot of families that unfortunately are not gonna have the same thing. And to you, I see it's funny, to Jenna, just, you know, keep ignoring us, just like always, and it, you're gonna see such a homeless increase if you guys continue to do this. And, and it's not fair that we have to pay the dollars to bail you out out of your shit.
You know, normally, uh, my name is Benjamin Holyfield, and normally I don't speak on these issues. But today, when I went downtown to get these, uh, this T-shirt, T-shirt, I was able to pass through in a, on like on Fifth and Main and so forth. A lot of people were homeless. So that's what sort of taught me, that started me to think about this particular issue. Now, in nineteen fifty, all that stuff was Godfathered, and I urge you to, uh, do the unusual, in this case, and give these people the permits or whatever they need to get back into their home so that we have compassion and love for us. Now, in terms of this homeless situation, it's terrible and getting worse. So we, we need to just address it. And matter, matter of fact, in nineteen fifty-two, so they were in since nineteen fifty, that stuff should be Godfathered, and they don't know anything about that. As a matter of fact, we don't know anything about that. If we weren't even thought, we weren't even thinking by coming to Compton, because nineteen fifty-two, Compton was an all-American city during the time that you had this home, an all-American city. And all that stuff was legal. Everything was A, was A-OK, so to speak. So I urge the City Council, staff, and everyone to have compassion and do the unusual for this, and, and the Godfathered end, or whatever is necessary to make it legal. Whatever is necessary, let's just do that and make it right for them to move in. Thank you.
I have no issue except I would like for you people to treat these people, they came with their hearts in their hands. Treat them like they're your family, or like you would treat your family and your friends with what this city has offered and you guys have utilized. Thank you. Limboon, I just wanna, I don't know, maybe because the history just keeps hitting me when I'm sitting here or whatever. The department that will really address this has been reduced, and that's the inspectors. You know, and to allow these people to purchase a home with it already like that, you cannot blame them. You must take a lot of the blame on yourself, even if you weren't here. It's the department. We had inspectors. If they went out and they didn't make an alliance saying that these two bedrooms shouldn't be here when these people purchased their home, then that's where you should start. And then as far as the garage conversions, I'm not gonna call any names, but we all know that there's homes without garages. People still living in them, and you guys aren't saying anything. These people have suffered with their house being burnt down, rebuilt with those bedrooms. Insulated rooms, I'm assuming, because they built them as rooms. If it was in a garage, the problem with the garage is that they're not insulated. So my thing is, you need to do the right thing. You need to look at our city, ourselves, and our mistakes. And like I said, I'm not calling any names, but we all know there's homes here without garages, and people are living in them. So, thank you.
Maria Villarreal. I live in Compton, and this home is in the street where I live. When the house was burned, I hate to do this, but this is, this is what happened. You call the firefighters, and the house is on, on fire. They come in from everywhere, and guess what? The closest pipe where they can get the water wasn't working properly. So that is the reason the house was burned all the way through. That's one thing. The second thing is that in Compton, there's a lot of homes that were purchased years ago like it is. I understand there is an inspection prior to purchase the homes, and who does the inspections? The city? How many, how many inspectors we have to inspect the homes? And who are they? Are they doing their job? That's a question that you should ask for your department. Because no matter how many inspectors you have in your department, you should do your job. They should do their job. Because enough is enough. The garage conversions and the garage situations only hits to our Latino community. So think about it. They deserve the permits for the garage, like we all in Compton, not just some. Thank you.
If I may, I just had one more question, one more comment. And that was to address the issue of the parking, because it does seem to be a priority for the planning department. And that was, while we can't, we don't have the room to build a new garage, we do definitely have room for off-street parking if that was an issue or a concern, which is what they've been doing ever since they had the house. They've been parking in the front driveway. So I just wanted to make sure that that was on record, because that's not really an issue anymore. Thanks.
I'm Emily Hart, Hollyfield, citizen of Compton. I'm not worried about a title. I don't need that. But I want to say that there are many houses in Compton. People bought them as they were. I happen to live in one of those houses. But for some reason, before, her name is Nancy, what was that city, what was her name that worked in the planning department? Anyway, since nobody remembers. She, I went to her because I heard that eventually the city was going to come down on people who had houses that had been converted to garages. When I bought my house, my house, I bought it as is. It was a veteran house. And you wouldn't believe it. Four years ago, after staying in this house over 30 years, four years ago, I was told that I had to fix my garage, revert it back to as it was. And I have stones on my house. But you know, the only thing saved me was that paper that she gave me. None compliance, but compliance. None compliance illegally, compliance legally. She gave me that paper. That's the only thing that got the city off my back. When I carried that paper down there and I showed it to them, I said, now, don't call me no more. Don't send me no more letters. I don't want to hear from you again about this issue. Because I bought my house. I bought my house as it was. So I know the people telling the truth. But you see what the problem is? We are not sensitive enough to the community. And we don't have people who are sensitive enough to our needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to close the hearing. Oh, one second.
Mayor Protim. While we have ended the public participation portion of the public hearing, I'd like to make some statements while the hearing is still open. I thought it'd be good to just review briefly the reasons for a variance. A variance is in our municipal code as an ability to facilitate a flexible mechanism to avoid unnecessary hardships or results that are inconsistent with the general purpose of the code. And situations that we can consider a variance are special circumstances. The special circumstances are applicable to property, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings. So one of the issues with this particular property is that at one point, the parcel, the adjoining properties in the area are all the same size. There are 23 same-size parcels. All but two of the parcels have merged so that they are double the size of the property in question. So the size can be considered a unique, special circumstance for the properties surrounding it. I also believe, and the director can chime in if I'm off, but I believe that if they are required to comply with our current code, they would be, our current code requires a two-car garage. So where there was testimony that one car wouldn't fit, the requirement would actually be a two-car garage, because that's our current law. So we cannot allow them to comply with 1950 law today. It would have to be 2018 law. And I believe that's a two-car garage. So I wanted to make those comments part of the open hearing. And we can close and have council comments if you want.
Move to close the hearing.
Someone.
Roll call. Counselperson Zarita.
Yeah. Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Protim McCoy.
Yes.
Are there any council comments?
I did, because in reading this information, I had also spoken with the city manager regarding, I mean, city attorney. And I think he may have asked, pretty much answered a lot of my questions. But I was wondering if there are any other properties in the area with the same size, that have the same, maybe facing the same problems that this property is facing.
I believe there is one other property on this street that is of the similar size and the same situation. But citywide, there are a number of lots that are 25 feet wide, 30 feet wide, less than what's required by code, that have garages, have one-car, I mean, have one-car garages, have no-car garages. So the situation occurs, I don't know the frequency, but it does occur citywide.
Okay. Then I won't even bother to ask him another question, because I think the city attorney kind of explained it when he stated that the circumstances is the size of the property, because it seemed to be kind of small. Okay. Thank you. I'm pretty much ready to vote. I'm ready.
Counselwoman Zarita.
So, Mr. City Attorney, you said yes or no that it was in compliance with our code?
The purpose of requesting a variance is because you're out of compliance with the code.
So?
So they don't, they do not have a garage that the current requirements that we are requiring now. They're asking for an exception for various reasons. One being that the removal of the code occurred at some point in the past, not, that did not happen by the actions of the current owner. And that the size of the lot and size of the living space of the home would make an undue burden to come into compliance and build a garage on their site. So they're asking for a special circumstance exception.
So in your legal opinion, what's your legal opinion?
Well, my legal opinion is that it's properly before you to request a variance. And approval of the variance is supported by our code. My legal opinion can't go into how I would ultimately decide it. But I will say that the municipal court, the municipal code supports council's approval of the request.
So, so that I'm clear, this is when it gets to be hard. So, Mr. City Manager, do you know how the inspections were done that allowed these people to continue? Because this was a, if I'm clear, this was a remodel after a fire that's in discussion today. How, if that, yes or no?
No.
I'm not talking to you. I'm talking to the city manager. You guys had your turn.
Counsel lady, there was a fire at the location. And they discovered that there was an illegal conversion in the residence. That's how it was discovered. One thing I want to add is that it's not uncommon for realtors who know that they're supposed to have pre-sale inspections, and they're supposed to let the buyer know that there could be a possibility of a conversion back in the properties if they sell them. So I'm not saying that this realtor didn't tell these folks or did tell them. I'm just saying that it's a fairly common practice for real estate brokers to not be completely forthright with the people who are buying the properties.
So was there a determination of the cause of fire?
I don't know what the determination of the cause of the fire was. Chief Simpson, I'm not sure if you're aware of even the fire report on this. So I'm not sure what the cause of the fire was.
Well, you know, I think we need to look into some amnesty policies, because there are several conversions in the community. And, I mean, if you get all the way to pass inspection on a rebuild or remodel, there's something wrong with the system. So in my opinion, I really can't make a, I can't support this item tonight either way, because I need to know why an inspection was done. And I guess plans were approved for the rebuild?
So they did a rebuild. So when they do the rebuild, do you have an inspector come out in different phases of the process to look at the framing, the electrical, to make sure things are up to code?
Okay, so, I mean, that's where I stand.
So, right. So can we bring it back? With the information that Counselwoman Zarita needs? We need to bring it back with the information?
That information.
Can we do that, Mr. City Attorney?
Or I was going to suggest that since Planning Commission was supposed to take this up. Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to suggest that since the Planning Commission was supposed to have taken this up. And according, I think I'm understanding them correctly when they said that there wasn't an attorney present at the time to maybe allow the Planning Commission to go back and take a look at it and get the information. So maybe allow them to make a decision about it.
Mayor Protim, that would take a decision of council. You could not take it off calendar or take it off the agenda. You would have to agree. That would be your determination for the hearing. I will say it was one, I think, the only meeting last year, I believe, that my office didn't get notice of. So we did not, were not in attendance.
Okay. We've not?
We weren't in attendance at the planning level. And there was one other.
So then it would be the pleasure of this council to refer it back to the Planning Commission with the recommendations and include the recommendation that Counselwoman Zarita is asking to make sure that information is included. Also, when they get it, they can take a look at it.
Well, wherever it goes back to, I hope it can be accompanied by amnesty proposal. Because we have, me for myself, I have to make sure all aspects of these garage conversions are covered, because people die in garage conversions all the time with electrical hazards. And, you know, I'm just really more concerned as how did this get by the whole process to be here. So I don't know if it should go back to the Planning Commission, but maybe so. But tonight, I don't think I have enough. I just don't feel comfortable with the item tonight.
Well, I was, I was suggesting that in order for us to continue to move the process, because I don't know how long it would be before we could get it back, before the Planning Commission, maybe you can tell me, would it be quicker to take it back to the Planning Commission or bring it back to the council?
Yeah, because I, Mr. City Manager and Mr. City Attorney, I foresee this being a continued problem. So I think we need to make sure that we have a policy set up for garage conversions.
Mayor Protim, I can understand the concern over precedents and counsel person's concern over the safety issues. I will say that dealing with a variance, you're dealing with a fact-specific situation. So I would not be as concerned that if this was approved, then the floodgates open.
Right.
Because you're making your approval based on specific backdrop of this property. And I would think it would be the rare circumstance that another item would match up on every point that a preceding item would. So you would have to consider it case by case. And I think that is the purpose and why it's in the code.
Mr. City Attorney, is it your recommendation then, since Counselwoman Zarita still is requesting more information, would you say that we should bring it back so that with the additional information? Or we should refer it back to the?
Planning Commission. What would you suggest? What would be the quickest way?
The quickest way to resolve this? The next Planning Commission meeting is on the 14th, however.
We can reconsider closing the hearing, continuing it to a date certain. And that could be as soon as next week.
Yes, sir.
And if we can bring back information, we could do it that way. That's probably, if we're talking about the quickest route.
Okay.
That's probably the quickest route to get an answer.
One thing I would like for you to explain, because I know there are some concerns in regards to how to get through this process without being called before. When we talk about the pre-sale inspection, could you kind of just kind of briefly explain that so everyone would understand what happens? What is the process and how this is really supposed to go?
So our municipal code puts the responsibility on the seller to contact the city in case of a sale. In this situation, that did not occur. The city does not have the obligation to somehow know properties up for sale or being, or in escrow or something like that. It takes the parties to tell us. In this situation, since there's a 1988 sale, there is the ability to go after the seller for failure to disclose or failure to inform the city, I would think, is moot at this point. So their option is to ask for leniency from the council through a variance.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I don't want to be misunderstood. I really want to help the family, but I want to just make sure that we have a plan for the future as we move forward.
Sir, you can't talk from the audience.
I would say that this item does not allow council to address global issues. Whenever the matter is decided, it will be, it'll have to be addressed just what's before you. We can't sort of deal with the bigger housing stock issue. We have to deal with what's before us.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, what's the pleasure to close the hearing and recess the hearing?
We have to reconsider the closure. We have to reopen.
Reopen.
And then we'll continue.
So, the motion would be to reconsider the closing of the hearing?
Some more. Roll call, Councilperson Zerita.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Protim McCoy.
Yes.
Now, the next motion would be to re- Continue the hearing.
To a date, sir.
So.
Next week.
Why am I so? You know, what the people have to understand is that to take a vote here, you're held liable, you're held accountable legally and responsible. So, Mr. Attorney, the item before us today, is it, is everything needed here to substantuate supporting this item tonight? The density of the parking, the legalization of the garage conversion, the electrical, the water, the heating, are you satisfied legally as a city attorney to support this item?
Yes. I had answered that. When I said legally, the municipal code supports counsel approving a variance. I stand behind that. The resolution that deals with reversing Planning Commission, I have reviewed. I think the findings in the resolution are supported by the municipal code. I think it would stand a legal attack. I think we have enough before us this evening if counsel desire to make a decision.
So, Mr. City Manager, do we have, do we have copy or evidence of the building and safety inspection, the final inspection?
Madam, council member, we can get that information for you, but my understanding is there's a copy of the inspection he's raising in the back, but the inspectors are called out and at different phases of the construction, and so everything has to be up to code before they approve it.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask if we can have two minutes to just look over that document.
Mr. Delvedill, did you indicate that everything was inspected and up to code?
My understanding in talking to the building director on this issue was, yes, the inspections for the fire damaged portion were conducted.
Yes.
But I would rather have the building director himself address that issue.
Victor? Oh, okay.
Mr. Roseco, can you come up just for a second and talk about some process in general terms and then what you know about this particular item if you have it?
Good evening, counsel, city manager, members, audience.
So, Victor specifically, can you just explain the process on a pre-sale inspection?
A typical pre-sale inspection will start with the realtor of the, of the transaction to apply, pay for the inspection. Once the inspection is scheduled, we, the inspector will conduct the inspection inside and outside. After the inspection is complete, there will be a list of corrections given to the realtor for them to repair. Once the, once those corrections are completed, then a report of residential records are going to be issued, and that's actually documented, the realtor needed in order to close escrow.
The counsel lady and the city attorney are looking at the inspection report. We're gonna let you take a look at this inspection report. Are you familiar with this particular property? Are you familiar with this property?
Yes, I'm somehow familiar by looking into the record.
So, you have the inspection report there?
I have the, this is, this is the inspection record, inspection card. So, this inspection is in regards to the permit that was issued for the fire damage repair, which is acknowledged it was inspected, they submitted plans, it was, it went through the whole process. Through the process of plan review, it was discovered that they have illegal alterations to the garage. As a result of that, through the plan review, they obtained this permit, but subsequently through this permit, they also secured a second permit to restore the garage back to its young use. Based on the record, the existing garage, as December seventh, it was supposed to be a garage. It is a garage because they converted back to a garage.
So, when they submitted plans for review, they were told to revert it back when they submitted the plans?
Part of the requirement with any alterations is we're required to have planning and zoning approval. After they go to planning and zoning approval, then go to building plan review approval. So, in this case, it was noted that the garage was missing. So, there's several options when it comes to that. One is that it's a possibility that in one point the city issue a garage to convert it back because it was an amnesty in a period of time. I don't recall the years. But subsequently, when, if you don't have a permit, they will have to be, they will have to be legalized through the process that is presented upon you.
So, now, is it a garage conversion or not?
Technically, by the record that I look into it, it's not converted. It was converted back to a garage. So, technically, unless it was done in the last two months, it's still a garage.
You say it's still a garage?
It's still a garage.
So, they converted it back?
The permit was issued, there's a permit record, and I had to get to you, so.
We trying to help you, so please. Well, I'm gonna ask that it be brought back, Madam Protim. Since they don't want to cooperate, let's bring it back.
Let's bring it back.
The building permit number B seventeen dash zero 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 three eight seven was issued on, on April fifth, two thousand seventeen. It was inspected final twelve seven, two thousand seventeen.
When was the fire?
The fire happened to be based on the first application for the building permit, B seventeen zero zero one four four, that they applied for a permit on February ninth, two thousand seventeen.
February ninth, two thousand seventeen.
Yes.
So, Mr. City Manager, I'm requesting that you bring it back with the facts. What, if it is or if it isn't a conversion already now, if it was approved, if the conversion was approved by building and safety, it's just too many questions at hand.
Okay.
Madam City Clerk, what date would that be?
The counsel's pleasure. The next counsel meeting is the twentieth.
The twentieth?
I'm sorry, it was the thirteenth.
Thirteenth? Okay.
So, some more. Second.
Roll call.
So, the hearing, continued hearing will be March thirteenth at five thirty-five P.M.
Thank you.
Councilperson Zerita.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Protim McCoy.
Yes.
We are now at consent agenda.
Motion.
Some more. Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Zerita.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Protim McCoy.
Yes.
Item number four on your agenda will be re-agendized because it requires four votes. So, we're at item number five, which is a resolution of the City Council of Compton authorizing the city manager to amend the abatement service agreement with New West Landscaping to provide additional compensation and establish a purchase order in the amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand dollars.
Some more.
Second.
Comments? Roll call.
Councilperson Zerita.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Protim McCoy.
Yes.
Item number six also requires four votes, so it'll be brought back next week. We're now at approval of warrants, which is warrant number two four three six four nine, February the fifteenth, First American Title Payment for the First Time Home Buyers Program in the amount of eighty thousand dollars requested by the city manager. Warrant number two four three eight five six, March first, Broker Solutions for Payment of the First Time Home Buyers Program in the amount of seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars requested by the city manager. And warrant number two four three eight seven one, March first, Tony Turner for Lunch and Refreshments for the Black History Month Events in the amount of three thousand three hundred dollars requested by the city manager. Total amount of warrants, one hundred fifty-five thousand eight hundred dollars.
Some more. Second.
Comments? Roll call.
Councilperson Zerita.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Protim McCoy.
Yes.
You're now at counsel comments.
Councilwoman Zerita.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Just one quick announcement. I'm co-hosting a Spring Wellness Jubilee and Community Engagement. It's free for the community. We'll have some resources out there, different medical health booths and information, entertainment, a little fun for the kids. Saturday, March twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, from ten A.M. to two P.M. at Gonzalez Park, one one zero one West Cressy Avenue. And also, I wanted to announce, let me find it real quick. The, give me one sec. It's gonna be a great event at the YAL with professional wrestler, Joey. Joey Davis. Let me find the flyer. One sec. Okay, here we go. Joey Davis, who's a Compton native. He'll be at the YAL. He's an undefeated MMA fighter, undefeated NCAA wrestler. He'll be at the YAL giving out goodies and signing autographs, March twenty-ninth, from four P.M. to six P.M. That's the Compton YAL in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department at seven hundred Alameda. So, hopefully, all of you go out to support Joey Davis. He's phenomenal. And hope everyone have a great week. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sharif.
Thank you, Madam, Mayor Protim. I will be hosting my community town hall meeting on Wednesday, March the fourteenth, at six P.M. at Kelly Park at twenty-three nineteen East Carlisle Street here in Compton. Our guest speaker will be Dr. Keith Curry, President and CEO of Compton College. He will be discussing the college marquee on Greenleaf. He's wanted to put a marquee up there and he really want to talk to the community and inform the community regarding that marquee. This is an interactive meeting where you will have the opportunity to ask questions, voice opinions, and submit concerns regarding public safety and quality of life issues. Light refreshments will be served, so please come out and join us. Also, the Los Angeles County Sheriff Department, Compton Station, is having the Community Academy starting Tuesday, March the twentieth through May eighth, timed six P.M. to eight P.M. Location, Compton YAL Center. There at seven hundred North Alameda Street. The Compton Academy is an eight-week hands-on course designed to inform and educate citizens of the Compton community about the Los Angeles County Sheriff Department. We believe that we can provide citizens with a better understanding about what we do. They display any rumors and build a positive relationship with the community we serve. So, please come out and speak with them and get to know the Sheriff Department a little better. Mr. City Manager, I would like to know, could you please provide an update on the South Park, the South Park project?
Counsel lady, I'll bring that back to you next week. Right now, we've looked at, we went out to your town hall meeting last month and had a meeting with the residents in, around the park, and those plans are going to be updated in the next couple of days. I'll have Margaret Hunt send me those updates.
Okay, thank you. And I really want to thank Caltrans for the cleanup they did this past week. It was really great. They had about three different sections, I would say, of Caltrans. One from Los Angeles section, the sixty-fourth, and also from Long Beach, they came and they cleaned up the, the different, right there, the Atlantic at the seventeen freeway. And they did a great job. I'm very excited about the partnership, but what I am looking forward to, Mr. City Manager, is that we speak with them in regarding some type of maintenance program that they plan to help, help them put in place or talk to them about putting in place because it should not take them four years for that, for that to be clean. And so, I would like to make sure that it's clean within a certain period of time, and so we could talk to them in regarding it. That'd be great. Thank you.
Just a few announcements. I have the, I was, I am hosting a community garden, but the date has been postponed. I'll come back with another date for the community garden grand opening. And I will be hosting a town hall meeting on April the twelfth at Burrell McDonald Park, and Public Works and Code Enforcement will be there to discuss the community's concerns, as well as Deputy Owens will be there to bring us our crime stats. And then I am co-sponsoring with Domenico doing another creek cleanup on April twenty-first, and more details will be forthcoming about the community cleanup. And let's see, Mr. City Manager, I would like you to bring back an update on the traffic signal on Wilmington and Greenleaf. Let me know the status and, you know, when we can anticipate some work being done in that area. And also, the status of the off-ramp repairs on Central and on Wilmington. I know that you said you had to contact another entity, but could you please let me know when we're gonna get to that because coming off of those off-ramps, it is horrible with the potholes, and it's, it really is damaging to your car. And I want to give the information. For the services on the Honorable Doris Davis, her, she will be, her services will take place on Saturday, March tenth, at eleven A.M. at, here in the chambers, and she will lie in state here at the council chambers on Thursday, March the eighth, from six P.M. to eight P.M. And on Friday, March the ninth, from three P.M. to five P.M. So, and parking will be over at the Compton Library. She, the family is asking in lieu of flowers to make a donation to the Doris Davis Endowed Memorial Scholarship, which will go for scholarships to support Compton students pursuing a career in teaching at Cal State University Dominguez Hills. And if you have pictures or anything that you would like to, you know, present, the family is asking you to upload them to www.tributes.com/dorisdavis. And I would like to adjourn in memory of Bertha Swangler, who was a longtime community resident of the city. And that's all. Let's see, okay. And that would be all that I have for today.
Second. Roll call.
Councilperson Zerita.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Protim McCoy.
Yes.
Yes.